Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, October 16th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Hou.
Here. Everybody else, too.
Everybody else. All present. Announcements. On October 12th was declared Margaret Carroll Day, and a citation was presented to Ms. Carroll at the Blackstone River Greenway, the starting line there. And basically, a proclamation was presented by our town clerk to Margaret. And basically, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically, the proclamation says, whereas Margaret Carroll is the longest active volunteer at the Blackstone River Greenway and Heritage Corridor, whereas Margaret Carroll has been an outstanding resident of the town in Millville, whereas Margaret Carroll has shown true perseverance and dedication to the planning and completion of the Blackstone River Greenway. Now we therefore be it resolved that Jennifer Callahan, Town Administrator, and Joe Reposa, Chairman of Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 12th, 2017, to be Margaret Carroll Day of the Blackstone River Greenway. Margaret had a great time. Unfortunately, due to a conflict, I was unable to attend that. But from the Facebook pictures and the like, it was most enjoyable for Margaret to cover those 3.7 miles. All the best to Margaret. She's a great, great contributor to the town of Millville and always has been. The, we had an information session on, in our last meeting regarding the choice of power supply. So that on October 18th, we have, we have a session at the Senior Center?
That's here. This one, that one is going to be here on the 18th at 6:00 PM here at the Town Hall. And today, at 11:30, again, they were at the Senior Center.
It was today?
Yeah. They had, they've done twice. They was, they came back.
So everyone that has received a package like this in the mail, they were receiving their energy source from Eversource. And everyone that's not, signed up with someone else got one of these letters. So there is a choice. And the merit of the program is it's going to save the town, the people that have signed up, and if they subscribe to this service or accept it, in the aggregate, it's going to save the town around $45,000 in revenue. And the second strong point there, it's all green, green energy. It's green power. It's basically what we, we're getting a source that's, that's providing, provided from wind Item 3C on the announcements, the Blackstone, Blackstone Valley Center for Business Enterprise, Business and Enterprise, the governor's announced nine and a half million dollars in skills or capital grants to support vocational equipment and programs. This nine and a half million dollars, along with $36 million that are, that have already been appropriated for skills capital grants to 78 different educational institutions over the last two years. The skills, capital grants will help boost our economy and equip students with new skills, knowledge, and experience with state-of-the-art equipment across the Commonwealth. That, those were Charlie Baker's words. So it's good to know that we're getting that support from the Commonwealth. And moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add that it's, it's almost a $500,000 grant that's actually going into the Chamber of Commerce to create this actual manufacturing vocational technical program that's also going to partner with Blackstone Valley Tech, Quinsec Community College, and Worcester State University College. And so it's actually going to be situated right at Lynwood Mills where the Chamber of Commerce. So especially for those entrepreneurial or innovative students that might be actually moving in that direction, it will offer another opportunity locally in the valley. So it's a great, it's been long in the making to bring an actual college campus site here. So that's the reason I shared it, because it will affect us.
Item 4A on the agenda, Green Community Committee vote to appoint Chris Holmend of 115 Shifah Fisher Street to the Green Community Committee. The, on, the, Chris's background is that he's a facilities manager for the U.S. Postal Service, and he's aware of mechanical systems, he's energy efficient systems and the like, and he'd be, he'd be a tremendous asset to the Green Community Committee. So tonight, I'd like to hear a motion to appoint Chris Holmend to the Green Community Committee.
So moved.
Second. Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Did you want to skip the minutes?
Well, up here. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of October 5th? You and I here.
I'm abstaining.
I was in here. I was a day late.
It was the meeting that we had on the October 5th. It was in the packet. So if somebody hasn't had an opportunity to read it, you can always put it to the next meeting. But it was the.
I make a motion to accept the minutes you've written.
I'll second that motion. Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Public forum. Anyone wish to speak? Hearing has seen no, no interest. We'll move on. Correspondence. The Town Administrator is, Mrs. Callahan, has sent a letter to Wayne Kimball, President of Kimball Sand and Gravel, for the generous donation of sand and materials to complete the walkway to the, it's not complete at this point, but.
Yeah. It'll get there.
But there, there's lots of paving stones and sand and whatever, and Mr. Kimball has come across and donated sand and whatever. So thank you.
So I have a, yes, I agree. Thank you for Mr. Kimball. He's always been a good neighbor to us. I have a question, though, about the playground. On behalf of every child under 12 years old, because I have to hear it one more time from my own children. Do we know the expected date of that? I know there's still work to be done.
Yeah. Well, I think it would be good to put it as an agenda item for the next meeting. We did just have a meeting with the principal, and I've been meeting with our Highway Surveyor for other work. There was some conflicts going on initially with workers trying to get work done. So we're trying to iron that out, and I think we've come to a good understanding of that. So I think it would be good as an agenda item to bring up. If you don't mind, we'll do that, and I can, we can share that. I know Joe was part of that, but it was late after we had already sent the agenda and stuff out. It was on Friday that we kind of met.
I hope my daughter call you then. Every day.
I bet.
The, I'm not going to read this letter. It's a long letter, but it's a letter written by Mrs. Callahan at the request of the Board of Selectmen to approach Blackstone for a regional dispatch agreement. And this is, the basic issue here is that our existing agreement with Mendon has expired, and we're looking to move forward and, because Blackstone's communication system is comparable to ours, basically low band versus a high band. So communication from the Mendon dispatch sometimes is marginal, or in some areas of the town, our patrolman cannot receive the signals. So what, what we were looking at is we worked, we were on the same bands that Blackstone is, and the letter was well received by the Select Board Chair, Dan Keefe, at Blackstone, as well as Dan Keyes, the Administrator. And I followed up after they received the letter at one of their Select Board, Board meetings, and the Fire Chief and the Police Chief were present, and there was discussion on the subject of it would make sense to regionalize Blackstone and Millville. And the comments that came directly from, from the Fire Chief and the Police Chief in, in Blackstone was that it would be a good fit for the both towns to get together on that. And there were some action items given, charged to the Chiefs, the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire in Blackstone, and they were going to be doing some budgetary thing. But that, that action is still pending. We're waiting for the financial bits and pieces of this thing. Do you have anything else?
No. I know we, you asked to have it placed under Selectmen's forum, but I think you did a good synopsis of that.
Hard to make.
It was like symbols underneath there. So I, I think that it's fine. There's nothing new to report other than the last meeting. I understand that the Board of Selectmen did have some reporting from the Police Chief, but I also understand Mr. Keyes has not been able to attend. He's had some injury that he's taking care of. So I think for now, just on the immediate level on that evening, they had, you know, continued to table it. But we're also doing our side. The Chief and I have been obviously meeting with state officials related to that whole issue. And so I think we'll be able to, you know, continue pursuing that. But I think you caught most of the gist of what you've observed.
I think it's just important to remember that, even though it's, we're looking at a regional dispatch setup, that it's not regionalizing. We will be purchasing services from the town per a contract and agreement, because when you think regional, it's a little different, regionalizing, it's a little different than actual purchase of services.
Good, good point. Well taken.
So I am always just mindful to make sure that people know that there is a difference and which one we are doing.
Excellent.
I'm going to ask Town Administrator Callahan to.
Sure. The next letter was correspondence we have sent to the state with regards to our Central Street Mass Works project. This one was addressed specifically to Secretary Ash. I know our Highway Surveyor, who is here this evening, has been in close contact with myself and the engineers. And one of the things that even though we have received a $1 million grant, our entire goal has been to try to do all of Central Street. And of course, when you're doing preliminary design, and we were applying for the grant, there are a lot of things that weren't priced out, and we want to make sure that we can actually do as much of the road as possible. So the reason for this particular letter was to alert Secretary Ash that we, we recognize that the $1 million is incredible, incredible gift, but we didn't know that some of the unforeseen conditions that lie under the road, which means, you know, we have to look at a full replacement of all the existing drainage infrastructure, structural retaining walls, and reinforced concrete slab that's under the roadway will be more costly than when we would want to have. So in keeping with trying to still do our goal, we're trying to make the Secretary aware that if we offered to potentially increase our Chapter 90 contribution to the project and all, and also gear our Complete Streets grant, which we had just submitted, which is in your packet, we would try to use those resources to actually go all the way to the Rhode Island border. So one of the reasons I wanted to alert the Secretary is if there are other ways that we can help fund this and be on alert for it, you know, we want to make sure we can do that. We did get some indication from the state coordinator for our project that the state likes to have these Mass Works projects as closely adhered to the budget schedule, but more importantly, to the time schedule for construction. And sometimes they will reward communities that have done that, especially if other communities haven't been able to do that. So we're just keeping the state in the loop, keeping our coordinator in the loop, and I want to keep you in the loop.
Thank you. And Eversource at the rear on Forty Kempton Road, they sent a letter, and they're just going to be clearing some vegetation, some trees away from the power lines. Ms. Callahan, do you want to take, take Andy Hou with the?
I do. You know, one of the things is because the warrant was, I gave you all of the articles that we were going to submit, but the final language wasn't in. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, the first item was the special town meeting review of the warrant articles. But if you'd like to do the other two and return to that, that's fine, too. Do you want to just make the grant announcement and then return to the special town meeting article review period?
Let's talk about.
The grant.
The grant.
Yes. I think it's good news. So let's do that. We have a wonderful announcement. I know some people already know, but one of the things that the direct, this board directed me to try to address as soon as I came in the door was the dilapidated building on Central Street formerly known as the Mug Pub. And we had actively tried to pursue a number of options, and one of them that I brought back to this board was trying to use the Attorney General's Office, a new program that they had that looked at trying to help communities with blighted properties. And I'm pleased to say that on our first go-around, we're one of only four communities in this entire area to be able to receive this matching grant, which will allow us to actually move forward and, you know, take down that building. The big thing about this was that even though that title, that property has been a tax title, the town did not want to take possession of it because it represented too much of an insurance liability. And until we knew we could actually take it down, and if we could do it in a way that partnered with another funding source, all the better, because we know we're not in a good shape for that. So, so the good news is that this grant has to be fully executed by the end of December, which puts us right on track to remove the building and to be part of, you know, removing that for our Mass Works project as well to go forward. But the other piece of it was to try to make sure that we could take possession of the property, and I came before this board, and we'll talk about that later on in the agenda, about successfully executing a deed in lieu of foreclosure and bringing it to the townspeople. So, so this is a great news for us and looking forward. I know the Chief and our Highway Surveyor, who did an excellent job recently of cordoning it off because we were really concerned about it falling down before we had the announcement. So it's like Christmas has come a little early for us. So I'm happy about that.
Next, we have a toll road request submitted by Karen Vernon for the Organization of Mespa Millville Elementary School Parents Association. It's scheduled for October 28th, from 8:00 to 12:00, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Rain date of November 4th, same, same times. The contact is Karen Vernon. She's, she's President of the Mespa group.
Mr. Chairman, that, the, the purpose is obviously to fundraise for the school and the school clubs, and I wanted to make sure that it had all the, even though we had a quick turnaround, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and our Highway Surveyor have all signed up on it, just so that you're aware of it.
Motion, motion to approve.
Can I just, because I am an officer on that committee, one of the things with the budget, you know, it does have impacts. And so what happened is that some of the clubs that were, used to be funded after school by the district is, are not, because they're out putting their funds towards the, you know, the day programs and rightfully so. So Mespa, though, they've never had a toll day. They felt it was important to maintain the clubs and those opportunities for children after school. So they thought that having a toll day and all of those money will be used strictly for after-school clubs for kids to experience a wide variety of things. And most of the times, it's the teachers there who are, who are doing those clubs. So I just wanted to explain that it's not a typical, that they would do it, but just with the budget, they thought it would be a good, a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion to approve toll day. It's been signed off by the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Highway Surveyor.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we can go back.
We doing the warrant?
Doing the warrant.
So I have a question. You said this went to legal, so now it's back on RT. Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. And this is, our expectation tonight is to sign, uh, excuse me?
To review all the articles and to approve each of the articles if you would like. If there is ones that you would strike, then, you know, obviously, we would sign on a, on a separate day. But if you want to make those amendments, we can do that this evening. I would like to vote to approve it. Town Council has been involved in writing all of the articles with me. There's a number of them for road acceptances, and there are ones that I submitted in the last two meetings, the actual warrant article submissions. Some had language that was prepped without legal counsel, but we've had them actually involved in, in all of that. And only because we still have time before, you know, the deadline for the 14 days to actually post beforehand. So it would have to be posted by the end of October.
30th.
Yeah, 30th. So, but I mean, unless you want to come together again, we can do that. You know, if we find that we have another meeting, potentially, we can, we can pull it together.
Okay. The, the questions I have pertain to the status of road acceptances, and I'd like to hear the input from our Highway Surveyor, how we stand on those subjects.
Do you want to go right to the road acceptances, or do you want to go through each article and explain? I mean, I have provided an explanation for each article. I know you're very familiar with them. I don't know if you want to, it's up to you, up to the board.
I say we go in order.
Yeah.
And then we're organized.
Yeah, sure. The first article is Article One. Article One, which is unpaid invoices from the prior fiscal year. We expect only actually two items that'll be on it. One is from the library, and the other from the Police Department for a small nominal amount, something like 200 and some odd dollars. So that will be on the warrant. Article Two is to amend the revolving fund bylaw. This is something that took place prior to my time. I think that there was a revolving fund, and then some of the revolving funds removed. Our Finance Director, myself, and the Chief have met about this to reestablish this as a revolving fund, and in order to do that, we have to add it to the bylaw that allows us in the future just to automatically have it as a revolving source. It would come with a limit of the funds generated from firearm license applications of $1,500. And obviously, the Chief is looking to apply that in, you know, substantial ways back into the department. Article Three is to amend Chapter 75 of Licensing. This is something this board has already talked about quite extensively when we've talked about enforcement. One of the things I wanted to do is take advantage of the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, which allows the town to do more than an annual review of tax delinquent properties and property owners. And what this was trying to do is help communities actually collect taxes and/or prevent people from actually seeking out special permits or licenses when they owe the town taxes. I know this is a big issue for anybody trying to generate revenue for the community and to be able to have the appropriate amount of revenue to spend. So this will allow the town to use any time period, not just a year. So if they're not current, we have the right to tell them, until you become current, you're not allowed to either seek out a special license or a permit or any other kind of action that requires a board permission. Many other communities have done this, but we have to put the language in to do that. And, you know, we have already started to, to operate with that as well.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Does that include dog licenses? Because you want your dogs licensed and tagged and rabied and all that good stuff. So I think there needs to be some kind of stipulation that, because that's a tracking mechanism. I think that's a safety issue in some respect, too.
Well, the law of the way that's been constructed and written by our legal counsel, and I had attached in our former two meetings, the background for it, that they use it for records of all municipal taxes, assessments, betterments, and other municipal charges. So probably technically, yeah.
It would fall under municipal charges.
Right. You know, whether somebody would, you know, request that that actually be something that would be paid in full, the town would have a right to, to ask that from, from what I can gather as an interpretation. But I don't think that.
I just worry that people are, if they're back on their taxes, they're not going to come down and register their dog, or they're not going to get their dog shots, or we're not, you know, I, I don't know. I'm, I don't know how that plays out. I don't own a dog.
I think this is more, we're looking at other issues, larger issues like.
No, I, I get that. But it does say licenses or permits. So it technically is a license.
No, that if they're seeking a license or permit.
Right. So if I, I owe back taxes. I owe 20 bucks. I can't license my dog. Is that going to create a bigger problem within the community? Because you can't license your dog.
It will.
So I'm thinking.
We're going to, we're going to create another snowball.
See, I, I think that by state law, you know, that provides the actual annual fee you collect for licensing dogs, for baby certification, those kinds of things, I think that would actually trump this. This is more, in other words, that you, you already have a. This is more, in other words, that you, you already have a condition that you have to meet for every community. Every community has the ability to do that. I don't think that that would actually supersede this.
So dog licensing falls under a state?
It gets capped at, yeah, it, you know-
It's a state bylaw, not a town bylaw.
And we get to assign the actual amount, I mean, it's not, we don't get to assign the fee. The fee is set, yeah, by, by, for the town clerk and for us. So, I can check into that, but nobody else has raised that, so it's, it's a, it's a question that I guess would be, but I don't think, if you look back on the actual documents, it was mostly referring to something much more substantial.
I understand that the, the spirit that it's written, but once it's accepted, it's the, it's the words.
Well, I'll tell you-
And license is a license.
We have people coming down every day for building permits that owe a year in back taxes, you know, or two years, but they want to put an addition on the house. We have people looking for special permits to, to place, I know.
I totally agree with that.
I know.
No, I totally agree with that. I just, I don't want to cause it another problem.
Mm-hmm.
Or a different issue. And that's my only concern with it.
Why don't I do this?
I mean, I'm not about like taking it off, I just need more information.
So if you have commercial property, and you want a special permit to, to do something with your property that would increase your revenue and then allow you to catch up on your taxes, you can't do it?
You know what? This is different, I think, because it's certain municipal charges, that's what the amendment-
The business side of my mind.
The certain municipal charges that were listed, I think, within the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, they're not looking at those types of charges, they're looking at charges that are actually reportable to the town treasurer. And right now, you know, the town clerk handles, you know, the actual fees for licensing a dog, but doesn't necessarily get transferred to the collector treasurer. This, I, I know, and I'm pretty certain that it really is looking at the much more substantive charges or taxes that are owed and reported by the collector treasurer. Because even looking at this from the KP Law E update, and I'd be more than happy to, to share that, that I had shared in the previous ones, we can look at that. I would, I would hate not to do it based on the concern for potentially not, not necessarily the exact interpretation of the law or the intent of the law to be able to enact it because we have much more on the other side of non-payment or non-compliance that is more important to keep people up to date. So I, I would definitely be happy to pass this by our legal firm again, but again, looking at what it says in terms of non-payment of certain municipal charges, not all municipal charges. I'm pretty certain that it has to do with revenues related to the collector treasurer as opposed to other, other places.
No, I, I understand that, but it talks about not getting permits, or not getting licenses, or not getting renewals. Do you know what I mean? So how far do we go for that?
No, it's saying that you can't apply for licenses and renewals, but the taxes that they're referring to and/or the municipal fines is different. Yeah, so that's what it's talking about, is going forward with it in a 12-month period, but it's something to do with whatever the municipal treasurer periodically reports on to annually certify, and to certify the permitting and licensing authorities, the names of persons, corporations, or business enterprises that have outstanding unpaid taxes, you know, or other charges that, that fall under the collector treasurer. So, I don't think it is, but, you know, I mean, I think it's one of those things that becomes if the practice of the town is to look even at dog licenses, I guess, but that wasn't-
Well, I don't want to look at dogs.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, I think that would be something that we wouldn't be looking to do.
Brian, look, review that.
Yeah, so I mean, they're the ones who actually encouraged us to do that because we have wanted and we have looked at people who are not current, and we've been executing that in the spirit of the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, but eventually, the town had to adopt this language. So that's what it's really, but I can do that, most certainly, Jen, and communicate it to the whole board. After our meeting tonight, I'll send out a letter, an email.
Article Four?
Sure. Is, Article Four is to establish grant matching in capital needs stabilization funds. This basically is an article that seeks to establish two stabilization funds. It's done with a great deal of reflection and input from our finance director and also members of our finance committee. One of the things, we have a generalized stabilization fund. Most communities take an actual advantage of the law to create what we call special purpose stabilization funds. We created a, a capital planning bylaw, but we have absolutely no matching, no funding source to support that. We're, you know, supporting it on a year-to-year basis in hopes that we can plan and pull it from the municipal operation side. We know that we can't do that based on our current finances. Most communities actually set up a stabilization fund specifically for long-term capital needs and put moderate amounts, whatever you can afford, towards that, knowing what kind of projects are going to come on, online. So, the reason for this is it sets up the specific purpose, so it doesn't get all tied up in other, other kinds of language that, in other kinds of needs that might be all vying for stabilization funding. So, it helps the community's overall financial standing, it builds better savings over time, and it manages our prospective debt, and also helps increase confidence because people can see where that money's going towards. The second stabilization fund is really something that's become apparent to me. The more grants that I apply for, and thankfully, even after tonight, recognize we're successful about, there are many grants we can't even apply for because we don't have an identified matching source. Most grant programs, if they don't fund you in, in their entirety, they ask for a percent match, or they ask you to actually not only identify the source, but have taken action on a particular source. So, by not having a, a small amount of money put away, we lose out on the ability to actually go and pursue grant funding. Even for the demolition grant, we had to take a vote and say we actually had money that we actually could do a percent match by getting it. We were lucky on that one. There are other ones we can't. So, this is twofold. It will set up two stabilization funds with specific purposes that are only going to help us continue to recoup and plan better strategically going forward.
And will each of those fall under the two-third vote?
Yes. They, because they're stabilization funds, they do, and they also are marked that specific purpose. So, you know, it, it's not like we have hundreds of thousands of dollars we're going to dump in either one of these accounts, but it's more to show that each year, we put a small amount of money aside, yes.
Specific purpose.
For that specific purpose. And it helps us with our bond rating in the future and all of that. It's all, again, same way we're doing for OPEB, same way. We've never done it before, trying to take, you know, moderate amounts to put them aside so that we can be in a better position for being evaluated financially.
And it shows the discipline of reaching a goal or doing a project if you have already put aside its planning.
Yes. Yes, I do. So that's that bylaw, I mean article, excuse me. Article Five is to accept property by deed in lieu of foreclosure, and this, of course, is the deed in lieu of foreclosure for the 35 and 37 Central Street properties. Thankfully, we were able to locate the owners of the property. They have signed the property over to the Board of Selectmen, and in order for the Board of Selectmen to proceed in accepting that property, we need town meeting vote. So, this will be, you know, the final piece to be able to execute so that we can fully embrace the grant funding and take down the building. Article Six is entitled Power Net Metering Credit Purchase Agreements. This, of course, has to do with the recent agreements that this board had voted to pursue and try to execute, and we successfully did that in our last meeting in terms of the board chairman signing. This is an article that would seek to gain town meeting approval because it's an agreement that lasts longer than three years, we need town meeting approval, but it would allow us to enter into these net metering credit agreements to take advantage of a share of savings for three new solar projects. We have never pursued this as a town. It basically will be passive income that comes to our town at a 22% discount to the net metering credit value, and that is expected to give us as a municipality, aside from the other thing that we've been pursuing for getting a cheaper power supply. This will give us an annual electricity cost savings to the town of about $3,400 and over 20-year savings of about $68,000. So, there's good imperative to do it. Article Seven is revisions to the earth removal bylaw. As you've heard our building commissioner speak and myself speak, I think, you know, we've identified a few issues with the current earth removal bylaw. One of the issues is the composition of the earth removal committee or, or board. One of the things that we feel is that we need to actually change and alter that membership to better reflect the expertise, knowledge, to oversee the compliance and enforcement of the bylaw. You know, we have had some issues when we've lost our building commissioner, where we didn't have that expertise in follow-through, but it's not just the building commissioner. This one would actually seek to have members of that board be appointed to the board, whether it's through the conservation commission, a member, zoning board of appeals, member, planning board, a town planner as a member, the board of health to have a recommendation, and obviously, our highway surveyor who also enforces our issues for stormwater. And also, if, if there's any other member that we thought was important at this point in time, we thought the people who are actually able to actually execute violation notices and also review plans that are going to be important, we wanted those on that board. The second thing that this bylaw does is it's trying to improve upon the existing language that requires the filing of a land plan that will also provide detailed accounting for reclamation work to be done by an applicant on a site. Our bylaw is pretty good, except it just doesn't have the teeth in it to actually make a requirement that when someone is applying to remove, I don't care if it's 50 yards of, or 300 yards of gravel, or, you know, 300,000 yards of gravel, we don't have a language that requires the applicant to actually show a plan of what it will look like upon completion of, of the site. And we have, you know, some places in town that we just don't have any ability to, to weigh into that without having that as a necessary part of the documentation required before an approval for an earth removal permit. And again, this is based on some of the conversations that I've had with the building commissioner and also our enforcement, zoning enforcement officer. And then three, this article is looking to enhance the violations and penalties associated with the enforcement of non-compliance. The first violation, you know, I don't care if you take out 300 yards of gravel and you didn't get a permit and you start stripping away all the loom, it's a 25, it's a $25 violation notice. That really doesn't put any teeth into, I think, a major, you know, effort on the part of the town to try to make someone comply. So this actually brings it up to the standards that we already have in place, makes it more uniform with the violation penalties that we have in place that we've already done under the jurisdiction of the building commissioner in other areas. So, it increases those penalties.
So a question?
Sure.
It's a six-member board? Not an odd number?
Yeah, it, it is. But if you want to make an amendment on the, on the town meeting floor, we could always do that. They were submitted, that was submitted to town council and-
And I know a lot of times, we're using templates, we're not reinventing templates from communities who've had success with their bylaws-
Right.
... and tweaked it already, so I just noticed that was a-
Any other questions about that? Okay, Article Eight is to add a bylaw, a new bylaw called remedy of public nuisances. Again, this is in an effort for this community to continue its very proactive stance in trying to bring compliance to individual property owners and individuals who seek to circumvent, I think, the spirit and intent of our existing bylaws. This comes on the recommendation of our new enforcement officer and also our building commissioner. One of the things we find is that there are subtle things that take place that become huge burgeoning problems for us. And when someone goes out as our building commissioner, or as our police chief, or our fire chief, or our zoning officer, or our board of health agent, when they go out to actually put together documentation to show that there have been clear violations that are not supposed to exist within the current bylaws that we have, we have found that it's, again, very nebulous, and what we needed to do is actually create a bylaw that sort of looks at some of these things that are definitely problems in town. We have people who are accumulating mass amounts of scrap metal in their yards and professing it's a hobby. And we have neighbors that call us repeatedly that, you know, it is a problem, and yet, we can issue out certain violations, but for it to withstand in court, towns of Milford, towns of Mendon have found that if you actually define what constitutes a nuisance, and a nuisance can be anything from, and it's, it's not, it's not so microscopic that it's, it's something that the average person can't identify with. These are things that when we start talking about people, you know, running full-scale, you know, scrap metal operations, you know, accumulating huge amounts of debris in their yard, but you can look at that, everything from, if somebody has burned structures and they're not lawfully inhabitable, or they're unstable, or dilapidated structures, or dangerous and unsafe structures, things like that, trash, we have issues with that. And it makes it very hard for the people who we charge to go out and fix these problems not to have the support of the language. So, we're adopting language here. It's not the same in exact order as some of the local communities that have found it holds up very well in court when you get that far, but it is language that town council has streamlined for us, and again, it's basically to seek a new bylaw to address these numerous public nuisance factors and to help our enforcement officers be able to address the resident complaints and bring compliance. That's all. That will withstand legal scrutiny and also hold up in court once we, you know, find that we have someone who continues to be a problem. Article Nine is unregistered cars. It sounds like it's just about unregistered cars. It's not. One of the things that in doing a review of our bylaws with legal counsel and our building commissioner and some other people, we had a very unusual provision, and that provision is actually in direct conflict with what we're trying to do, which is trying to make sure people don't turn into used parking lots, their yards, and to prevent people from accumulating large amounts of unregistered vehicles for, for parts in their yard and for things like that. But one of the things legal counsel, KP Law now does a lot of towns, said they've never seen this aspect of a bylaw, and the bylaw is why it's kind of conflicting, is it would actually undermine our ability to follow up on the provision of two unregistered cars, which is what most people understand is reasonable in a community, but it allowed the board of selectmen to issue special permits for storage of multiple, multiple vehicles on, on a property. Now, I'm sure that not everybody's paying attention to that, and I don't think you guys have done that recently, but what it does is it actually, if it looks like it's a permissible use in a community, even though it, it goes in direct contrary opinion to what I think our planning boards and our zoning boards are looking to do with establishing residential districts, by allowing people to, to do that, it's, we're flouting the, the whole issue of our Class II licenses and things like that. So this is to prevent that from being in direct contrary nature to the things that we're trying to do. So, town council thinks we shouldn't have that in there because it's not really what the intent of unregistered motor vehicles are, and most people should follow and obtain the right licenses to have multiple vehicles on a property. Article 10 is, we're already there, public way acceptance of Hurtu Road. Mr. Chairman and the board, there's, the next five articles, I believe, are all public acceptance for each specific road. If we can continue on the same vein, we can talk about each one, but the first one would be public way acceptance of Hurtu Road. Our town planner and highway surveyor have put down the, the description of the road, and basically, this is an article that seeks to have the town accept Hurtu Road as a public way conditional on meeting all official road acceptance standards and provisions. way conditional on meeting all official road acceptance standards and provisions. Article eleven is a public way acceptance of Twin Pond Circle. Again, the description of the article in the road that is being asked to be accepted by the townspeople is listed, and Twin Pond Circle, again, would be conditional for acceptance on meeting all official road acceptance standards and provisions. Article twelve is a public way acceptance of Paulette Way. Again, you'll see the official description and layout that's been supplied. And again, this is conditional on meeting all official road acceptance standards and provisions. Article thirteen is a little bit different. It's a public way acceptance of Albert Drive Partial under Carriage One. Eventually, right underneath it, you'll see article fourteen, where this is public way acceptance of Albert Drive Partial, Carriage Two. Two different people have asked and posited for this to be accepted by the townspeople as one whole road, but it has to be listed as two separate articles. And then article fifteen would be public way acceptance of Rondon Road. And again, the description there is laid out. And again, it would be conditional on meeting all official road acceptance standards and provisions. We do have our town highway surveyor, who has been working with our engineers and also our town planner. He's been updating me regularly. I asked him to come tonight so he can answer any questions you have about any of these particular road acceptance articles.
General.
Oh, and, oh, yes, John Hadley, I'm so sorry. Our chairman of our planning board is here as well.
So, basically, how are we on schedule in getting this?
Well, I think we should start with each one individually as we get them on your warrant. I believe we started with Hurtu Road. Hurtu Road in itself, the top coat of the road, it was put down in 2012. As the report that we got in April thirteenth of this year showed some normal reflective Some of the curbing needed to have its joints filled. The ponds for the drainage system on the road needed to be cleared of trees and undergrowth. The sidewalk on Hurtu Road itself needed to have its top coat installed. Also, the handicap ramps on Hurtu Road needed to be installed also to meet ADA compliant. At this time, the developer has been in touch with me regularly, pretty much since May, when we talked about this last. There's been ongoing work right through today. The final work for Hurtu Road itself, to my understanding, will be completed by this weekend, with some odds and ends that might need to take place prior to our town engineer, TEC, coming out scheduled on the twenty-sixth for a final inspection to go over the report that they put out last time and anything that they might find. I am very comfortable with everything that's going on on Hurtu Road. I'm going to stick to the engineer, the report, in my opinion, that everything has to be done. All i's will have to be dotted and t's crossed. And I don't see why this road can't go to town meeting floor. By all means, if this is not completed and done for the twenty-sixth, the next step is going to be for the planning board to cancel the public hearing for it, which will not allow it to be on the town floor.
The public hearing would be November sixth.
That is scheduled for November sixth.
All the roads.
That has been done by the town clerk, and that's being held at the senior center on November sixth at...
I think it's six.
Eight o'clock.
So, do you have it as a public hearing for all the six roads that we have?
Each individual.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes.
All the same night.
All the same night, but each individual road, so if we want to cancel one, we can cancel one and go with the other-
Okay.
-if they're done. And we'll have our report from the engineer. He'll be there the twenty-sixth, as Brian said, of October.
All right, well, that's good news. Hopefully, we'll be all set to go.
Your next one was?
Twin Pond.
Twin Ponds, Paul Etway, Twin Pond Circle. Everything on Twin Pond Circle was completed the end of June. Twin Pond Circle also got their report, April thirteenth of 2017. Their top coat was put on last fall, felt this time. They had some issues with their handicap ramps to make ADA compliant, to install the concrete and the pedestrian ramps. They also had, they had some major work that needed to be done in their retention ponds, which was a major concern of mine at that time to sit at least one season, which they completed very quickly after our May town meeting. Everything there has been stabilized and working properly. The drains have been cleaned, all driveway cuts have been fixed. As of today, the only thing that Paul Etway has to do is go out and mow down the retention pond of its, this year's growth, so when we accept it, it's starting fresh. He is aware of that. I did a walkthrough of it today. He knows he has nine days to our inspection to complete that, or again, it will not be put on the public hearing. And the inspection for that road is also scheduled for the twenty-sixth of...
Oh, okay.
And I will be present for all of them.
Will the planning board, Hillary, the planner, be there?
She will not. She is going to be on vacation. She, I actually had a meeting with her today about it. She's willing to put time aside on her vacation to come on conference call with me and the engineer if need be. She's very, been very active with the developers and the engineers to see this move forward.
I'll be there on the twenty-sixth.
You'll be there on Sunday.
Okay. Article twelve, Paul Etway. Good one.
He kind of did it together because there, isn't that the t, right?
Well, you did Twin Pond. That was Twin Pond Circle?
That was Twin Pond Circle.
Okay, Paul Etway, same thing as Twin Pond. The only thing they have to fix is one of their retention ponds, because there are two ponds within these streets that need to be mowed, and the final inspection needs to be completed.
On the same day. Article thirteen accepted for Albert Drive Partial, Carriage One.
Again, Albert Drive was topped again in 2012. In the engineer's report, we had the, some reflective cracking that needs to be sealed, which is taking place this week. Same thing with the sidewalk. The base coat has been put in, I believe, since 2006. Be corrected, please stand corrected. Which is still in very good shape. Some of the granite curbing there still needs to have some, some of the joints fixed. And, I believe at the intersection of Albert Drive and Hurtu Road, there's also the ADA compliant ramp that needs to be remedied. The water problem that we had on the road, the contractor of the development was, again, in touch with me time and time again about what was going in the ground, how to fix the problem, and the problem has been remedied. So we have no more water spilling over onto the road, which was natural groundwater. That was done properly and up to standard. Again, I see no problem with this portion of Albert Drive being put on the town meeting warrant.
Completed by inspection.
Completed by inspection. All i's dotted and t's crossed.
Article fourteen, public way acceptance of Albert Drive Partial, Carriage Two.
Carriage Two. Fortunately, he did not get his engineering report until September twentieth due to some Most of the work on Albert Drive on Carriage Two is some cracking and some minor deflection in the pavement. Again, this road was topped in 2012. Sidewalks on this section were completed at the same time in 2012 with top coat. There are a, two sections, one section on the sidewalk that needs to be cut, redone and sealed. And there are a few driveway aprons that are in need of being replaced due to the road being done and these, the properties being put in before and after and not having the proper transition for the sidewalks. So those need to be, it was all spelled out in the report of September twentieth, need to be addressed. The developer has come forward to myself and the planning board and has taken the extra step and is going to completely top coat the entire road, along with fixing every driveway. In my opinion, that is a win for the town. We are getting another layer of pavement, still keeping the proper curb appeal on the entire road. Under that is also sealing all the underlying cracks. So, not only are we going to have a binder cost, a top cost, we're going to end up with another top cost, which is going to structurally put this road right up to today's standard.
So they're gonna do a whole new layer of pavement?
Yeah. Mostly cosmetic, but due to cost, it was, to my knowledge from him, a few thousand dollars more to do the complete road than to stop patching it. We're not ending up with seams, we're not ending up with joints, we're getting a seamless paving job. It's a win for the town if the developer's willing to do this, and that's the way he's gonna go. In his retention ponds, this is on the road, on the sidewalk, there will be one section that is cut and seamed and repaved to new top coat. The retention ponds, he has one pond that, all ponds are working properly. All the drainage is working properly. The retention pond wall on one, on pond number two, needs a little bit of loom and seed. As of this evening, they were working on that, stabilizing it and proceeding to correct that. On retention pond number one, the only problem he has there is a little bit of erosion on the easement to the pond, which is going to be our access in the future. That is going to be stabilized in the next day or two also. Do we bring it up to standard?
All this work will be done by the twenty-sixth of the month, in ten days.
I'm being told all of this work is going to be done by the twenty-sixth, and believe me, if it is not, I am not going to recommend it to be accepted.
It will have to be, because the engineer has to see it done.
I will be the first one to stand up. If it gets passed, which it'll have a hard time if it gets past the public hearing, I'll be the first one to stand up and strike these articles. Being the structural part of these roads being put in in 2006, which is your binder cost, after having some lengthy conversations with TEC, the engineer that was assigned to us, Richard, I am very confident that the base costs of these roads and what is done underneath, what we can't see, is done properly. Most of the time, we get these roads, they go in, they put in the binder cost, they develop it, they top the road, and they come to us and say, you want to accept it. And we do. We've already had, you know, six years sitting here with these roads with their top coat on, with no, you know, no deflection, no major issues that have come, come awry.
Another point I'd like to add also is the same paving contractor will be doing all these roads. So it won't be different contractors trying to work into each other. He's doing all of them.
Article fifteen, Rondon Road.
Rondon Road's a little bit different than all of the others. As of right now, Rondon Road only has its base cost put on it. It never did have its top coat put on. Probably half of the sidewalk on Rondon Road was installed, base cost, at the beginning in 2006. The other piece of the sidewalk was, the bind, not even the binder cost, the gravel cost, was only installed probably in September, maybe late August. Has not been paved yet properly. All the granite transitions have been installed, and they were installed properly. The drainage system on Rondon Road is functioning properly. There are no retention ponds on Rondon Road, so there's no concerns with that. This is a small cul-de-sac that I believe there's three, maybe four driveways coming off of it. Still needs its top coat, which everything is being crack sealed on the binder cost. The emulsion is being put down, and then the top coat is being put on. And I'm told that will be done prior to weekend of this week.
I'm glad to see they're coming along. I took a ride up there last weekend, and then I went back up to all six of these roads and drove them, and I actually walked some of them too my first weekend up. So, it was good to see, because I didn't fully understand, and Brian was kind enough to fill me in on the details of all the markings, because I'm like, there's a lot of spray painting. And he informed me a lot of it was dig safe, so I was like, phew, because I was like, this is a lot of stuff. So, that's good. My only concern is with Rondon Road. I know we, we had talked, we had talked about getting the, it topped and having it some time to ensure that it was proper, it was all the way it was. That is my concern. That is my one concern. If these others look like they're in, on course to be approved and have everything signed over, great. My one concern is with Rondin Road not having, I mean, we're talking less than a month to vote on it after it's been put down. And you do, you know, you do like to have some time. Um, I know it used to, you know, kind of, more than a month.
Is it only the sidewalk, though?
Now, Rondin Road, the road is not topped at all. There's a binder cost that was installed back in the two thousand and six time. Um, the sidewalk there was only binder cost and only half of it was put in, um, to this day. Um, so the other half of that still needs binder and top on sidewalk. The road binder, uh, I've been, again, in deep conversation with the engineer from T E C. Um, he tells me the reflective cracking that is in the road binder, uh, as long as it is done sealed properly with the fiberglass approved crack sealer, uh, at the right temperature, and then putting the top coat on it, he says, what reflective cracking is there is going to be, is stopped. It's not gonna come through. Again, the roads that have been topped six years ago have their normal reflective cracking, uh, and have held up very well. Um, your structural part of the road is what's underneath than the binder cost, which is in very good shape for a road that age. A lot of times, these binder courses are torn up from construction vehicles, from well trucks, from, you name it. Um, fortunately, the binder cost is structurally still there, uh, after this.
It's not a throughway and.
No, no, there's not a lot of traffic on it.
The, the one piece of it is, is when you do let a top coat sit, you'll, to make sure the mix was properly and properly rolled out, um, that's where you'll get any deflection in the top coat. Um, and that only comes over time.
Whereas the work is being done, you be available to monitor that.
I'm gonna be there physically as much as I possibly can. I've actually rescheduled one of my personal jobs to push it out. I was gonna be out of town, but just because this is happening.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do wanna, um, give acknowledgement that I think this, uh, joint effort with the town engineer being on the premises with our highway surveyor, our town planner, uh, it's actually working very well to make sure that people are keeping on tap. Uh, early on, the town engineer had, uh, worked with, uh, both of them to come out and outline a plan specific to each developer. Uh, it's great to accept roads, uh, for a town, uh, because, uh, as long as they meet those standards, but it's not great to accept a road that doesn't meet those standards. It becomes not just a liability, but a, a cost. Um, the, the only positive side is that once it, uh, it's, it's meets all the standards, uh, and becomes a town road, um, it gets incorporated into our, uh, square, uh, our actual road miles for our chapter ninety, so. But it's no good to have a road that's falling apart and not conforming to it. So I think this has worked out very well, and I know they're working very hard, all of them.
Just as a side question, how many miles were you adding to our?
I don't have that answer. What, on a side question?
Two.
And not on a negative, negative note, because we have taxpayers, but I've already let the finance committee know. By adding these roads, we're adding fifty-five catch basins. We're adding six retention ponds. We're adding these roads for snowplowing. There is going to be.
A cost associated with that.
Significant expense, you, you're adding about four days of catch basin cleaning and multiple days, weeks of retention pond maintenance. You can ask the developer how long it's been taking them to clear his pond. It's going, it is going to be a major undertaking. We do have all these taxpayers there, so it needs to be done, but I'm alerting you of these expenses also.
And as we're going into the, which we've already been meeting, as you know, uh, with multiple department heads, uh, one of the things that, uh, the highway department has done in looking at our three-year projection for needs for department is if these roads do come on, what does that amount to in terms of, uh, required, uh, costs that we're gonna have to meet? And, um, so I'm glad that he has been so directly involved and is actually computing it out for us so that on the finance side, we'll have a better understanding of that.
Does this include staffing considerations?
It does.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I go back to, um, one of your articles with a question? Your article three? Did you read that one again, please?
The licensing?
Yes.
Delinquent taxpayers?
Licensing and taxes?
Do you want to see it? I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you.
Well, my question is, this is my understanding, listening to you, that is saying that nobody, anyone who has delinquent taxes is, won't be able to get a permit or a license in the town.
No, it's not all licenses, actually, it was exactly, you know, what I, uh, no, I just, I wanted to answer, actually, 'cause I know the vice chairwoman had asked that, and I said, I didn't think that it applied to all licenses, and it actually doesn't. Um, there's a number of exemptions, uh, just, um, for the smaller items, like, when I say that, dogs, fishing, marriage, things like that, it doesn't apply to. It really is about, um, the major kinds of things like excise. No, if you're delinquent on excise taxes and regular taxes, property taxes, um, those kinds of things that the treasurer collector actually records and keeps track of. So what this does mean is if you are delinquent, I mean, right now, by, by law, the town and any, uh, community in the Commonwealth can actually not proceed forward with someone's request for some kind of, uh, actionable, um, item for the town to have to entertain, if they owe outstanding taxes. Um, so you don't have to wait and just, in the past, it was, you had to accumulate a year's worth of unpaid taxes. Now, if you are actually someone who owes a quarter or two quarters, we can ask you to make sure that if you're behind, you actually pay that, and then we'll entertain whatever you want. It only makes sense to do that, because we have found ourselves actually going through contortions to, um, actually hear, uh, special permits and things like that, only to find out that somebody, you know, was, not only for a year, but they might, some of them had been in a year, but it's just not what we wanna do. Uh, I think anybody who wants town services and wants the expertise of town boards to entertain what they need to have, should make sure that they pay, um, you know, what is owed. That's all we're asking, is what is owed? And, um, Mass Municipal Modernization Act recognized that it really doesn't help communities to wait an entire year to be able to tell somebody why, by the way, you owe an entire year, and then we're gonna, you know, potentially not entertain it.
So if somebody comes in for a building permit, which I know is done already, they're going to be told you're.
Not they're told, they're gonna be looked at to see if they're in compliance, we do that already.
You're, you're correct, so if they owe taxes, they're not allowed to get that permit.
Till they pay up their taxes.
So now, if somebody owes a couple months of taxes and they come in to get a smoke inspection permit or a boiler inspection permit, they're not gonna be allowed to get that permit also, 'cause they owe taxes?
Is that one of the smaller?
I don't know if it's one of the items that, you know, for public safety, I don't think it's gonna apply.
Correct, but my concern is with that, if that is one of the permits that's not gonna be allowed, somebody who's, has fallen behind with their taxes, who's going to, say, sell their house and get this inspection, and you know the bank's gonna pay the taxes prior to.
Get paid at the closing.
At the closing, but if you don't allow them to get the inspection, the permit.
I think, I, I, I think what we're looking at is, I mean, I, it's great to find out all these, like, minor things, but I'm telling you, more often than not, and it gets me right, right, right in the jugular, when I see somebody coming in and, you know, that owes more than their fair share to be even entertained. So I get that part of it, I, you know, and I think it's understandable, um, I should've printed out every exemption, but you, you brought it to light. Uh, I don't think this town, and I can assure you as an administrator, I'm not looking to make a judgment about someone's personal safety, public safety, or things that really the law is not meant to actually apply to. So I would say, no, that's not gonna apply, and I guarantee you, I'm sure, with the printout of the exemptions, um, I did ask town council, um, while we were going over the roads, um, just, you know, as a quick note, and, uh, and he did say on those things, there is a long list of exemptions for those things. This is not something that, you know, we're not looking at somebody, um, not to make sure that they're compliant with something that's a public safety measure.
So I think we need to have that list of exemption available that night, because.
Sure.
As town meeting voters go.
Yeah, they should be clear.
If they are not a hundred percent sure around something, and I don't blame them, if they don't have all of that information, or we don't know, or we're going on this, they tend to vote no, and I, I don't blame them. So I think we need to have that list of exemptions so that, 'cause I asked the question, you know, you asked the question, you asked the question, we, this, Tommy?
I have a question.
Yeah.
When you're done.
Um, so I think we need to have those there available, uh, or to be able to answer that or to have it.
Sure.
Uh, my question is, if, if there's somebody on an active payment plan who's been working diligently to make these payments, maybe because they fell in arrears, uh, how would that affect that, and is that something that's taken into consideration?
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate that. Actually, this year, we have done away with active payment plans. Um, we need, uh, yeah, uh, we have had some people who've been on active payment plans for a long time. Uh, and, uh, they were notified in, uh, July first. We sent them out a very nice letter, um, explaining that, um, they had to pay fifty percent, uh, or their properties would be, be put right directly into tax, um, title. And, uh, we ha, I, I now have, um, at least, uh, the report from the treasurer that, uh, all of the properties, uh, property owners had complied with meeting the fifty percent of what they owed. By, um, December thirty-first, they will have had to pay the remaining fifty percent, and if not, they go into tax title. It's, it's, it's the nature. Um, I think one of the things that we've looked at is, um, for a long time, we've, um, granted these kind of special, uh, payment plans with no end date. Um, and what we've found is sometimes, uh, not what we, I mean, I haven't been here that long. I tell you, what, what I've asked my treasurer and, and director to do is to make sure that if people can pay, they're gonna pay. Uh, and, you know, it, there's no such thing as being on for years and years. And some people, um, you know, it's funny, the minute they're gonna sell their house, they pay up too. Uh, so it's, or they're gonna repurpose or something, you'll see that. So, you know, uh, we could cross that bridge when we get to it, but, um, in reality, this town has had sort of a, a nebulous policy on that, and I think some people have just, you know, taken advantage of that year in and year out. Um, you know, if, if it gets to a point where someone, um, can't stay in their house, um, there's a lot of different options, including family members, reverse mortgages, all kinds of things. But we're not in the business of, you know, trying to figure that out for people as much. And if, and if I had a surplus at the end of the year, um, I might be able to think about doing that, but we, we definitely don't. We're on a precipice and we gotta figure out all those ways. And so far, nobody's complained, so. But good question, it gets out what we're doing, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to go into detail on, um, in your old business meeting, foreclosure? I think.
No, are we gonna come back to the, you wanna do the warrant afterwards? Are we going to think about approving it tonight, or what do you wanna do?
I think we're gonna wait till we have a list of those.
You're gonna wait, okay, so we'll have to get, you know, do you wanna make it conditional to that, or do you wanna actually book another meeting?
I think we book another meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, it has to be posted on the thirtieth.
Right, so that's.
So that gives us Friday the twenty-seventh, or Saturday morning.
Mm-hmm.
So that it can be.
I can do either.
We're good?
Friday.
I prefer to do Friday, but.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we can do it, uh, sooner if you wanna get the information, I don't think it's gonna be.
But the engineer's coming out on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's why, I thought you were talking about the other thing for just the list. All right, so you're more interested in being able to see that, okay. All right, so that would be good.
So what are we saying, the Friday evening or Saturday?
Friday evening. I know I can't come Saturday, so.
Uh, you're gonna, with a meeting with the engineer on the twenty-sixth, I will have his verbal consent.
Right.
I will not have his written report.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're aware of that, as long as we know where we're headed.
Yep.
And that also gives almost two full weeks for some of that work to be completed.
So Thursday's not a good day, but Friday is? Thursday, twenty-sixth?
Friday, the twenty-seventh.
Oh, we can do, oh, yeah, the same Thursday night.
Thursday night, maybe.
Could do Thursday evening.
I was just thinking that was out, but it's a morning thing. So you can do Thursday, Friday. I have Girl Scouts at six o'clock, so I can do before. Thursday.
On Thursdays.
So.
So if we could do it on Friday?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
About twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Is that what we're looking at? What time works for everyone?
Uh, before six is difficult for me, right?
Me too.
Seven?
Seven.
Six or later, seven's good.
Seven.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seven, two, seven, thirty. And I'm sending myself two alerts at this time. I had the last one in, the wrong day. One hour, one day.
Okay, that sounds good.
We need to, to do eight?
Um, agenda, I think I've slid it underneath.
Basically, it's more explanation, you've approved it.
Right. Oh, deed and lieu of foreclosure, yeah, I think we still, yes. Um, just so that you know, um, that agenda item, deed and lieu of foreclosure, is, um, going to be, as you know, on the, um, town meeting, uh.
Floor, yeah.
Floor, uh, but the one thing I thought was important is that, uh, we could've accepted the property without doing a, a title report. I thought it was important to do that, to make sure there were no other liens or encumbrances, and I'm happy to report town council did that, and, uh, it's got a clean, clean bill of health.
Moving on, uh, agenda item number nine, Selectman's Forum. Um, I had requested, um, uh, when was it, last Thursday?
I'm just gonna step away from the table. I know it was a public hearing and all, but.
Yeah. Okay, the, uh, D E P and EPA made a presentation, uh, last Thursday on the situation on Providence Street regarding the contaminated wells and that kinda thing. To this date, there, initially, there were two wells. Uh, they were contained, uh, P C Es and T C Es, which are chemicals that, uh, typically associated as, classified as degreases and have been used in the, uh, textile industry. After this, we've been at this going on like two and a half years to, to track down the source of where, where that contamination is coming from. What, it appears that, uh, it's, it's not on our side of the, the line, it's.
Our side meaning the Massachusetts side.
Massachusetts side.
Coming out of Rhode Island.
Out of Rhode Island, somewhere in North Smithfield. And it was classified, uh, as a, a deep rock contamination. Um, and those things are very difficult to track. So we, we have a number of issues here. We have two states involved in this and, and, and the like, and trying to get things resolved. Uh, the, the good news is that in addition to those, well, those contaminated sites, there was one more that came up, but they looked at twenty-six other wells, and they're all good. So, uh, the, uh, the two. The two primary contaminations on Providence Street, the DEP has set up those wells. They had an agreement with the residents for filtration systems and carbon filters and that kind of thing to handle that problem. But that's basically a two-year agreement. And they're going to carry that forward another six months. And then beyond that will be the residents' responsibility to continue. And the cost, the cost of it, they'll have to pick up the cost on it. So, we've got EPA. They've got their thing done. DEP has moved back now in that the primary... Their initial involvement, really, was the work that was being done at 171 Central Street, all that excavation and the like. Apparently, the contamination didn't come from the wetlands from that property. And most of that stuff's been remediated. And all that construction material that came in into that is fill. Has been removed under the DEP supervision. So, basically, everything is good. DEP is be finished with that in a few months. EPA is out of it. There are two states involved here. I don't know how that works. But not so bad. The one thing that Mary Jew recommended was that because we don't have a public water system here, residents should be frequently testing their well water for coliform contamination and that kind of thing.
And actually, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, the way that this brought... Was brought to our attention was because there was an actual private resident who had their well tested and decided to have it also tested, not just for routine bacteria and sediments, but also for volatile organic compounds. And that is how this whole thing started. So, one of the things that they do emphasize, you could have your well contaminated by, you know, a septic system that's too close to your well. But that people, regardless of where they live, should routinely, at least on an annual basis, if not every two years, be looking at that for their own personal understanding of what's going into their water. And so, purposely, when I put together the forum with everybody, we broadened the circle of people that were... Or the areas that were being evaluated by the DEP and the EPA. And we did have some new people. And everybody, I will say, was very pleased with the knowledge that was put across, the studies that we were actually looking at and trying to debrief on the... To the public about what actually has happened in all these months. So, it was... That was healthy. The big thing is, is that it is an ongoing investigation. And even though they have some ideas of where the sources may be, they're really working quite heavily to make sure that they identify the correct ones. And then, once they do that, it'll be... The burden becomes on the individual businesses or the violators who actually contaminated to be able to address that. And then, they need to stop the source and eventually hope that it doesn't continue. The plume doesn't go further in the bedrock. So, hopefully, that will occur on the Rhode Island side in the fairly near future. I know they're working hard on that. But until they actually know exactly which businesses that it is, they're not going to actually proceed. And I'm announcing that to the public because it's important with their ongoing investigation. But it was a good forum. It really was.
And the important thing is, I believe, most of all of the Providence Street residents, their concerns have been assuaged in terms of PCEs and the TCEs and the like. Next on the Selectman's Forum was BMR and BVT. Personally, in the past week or so, I was notified by email and the like that our school district is being closing or reducing the opportunity for 8th grade middle school students in participating in...
Access.
Access to BVT. And the way I'm looking at this, I'm kind of disheartened in that, you know, we're talking about students here that... In both the towns of Millville and Blackstone have really two school systems, two districts. BVT district and BMR district. And it appeared to me, or the comment was made, it was basically the... This whole thing came about by the freshman student count going into high school this year. It's a significantly lower number than the past. So, it looks like that there appears to be a competition for freshmen.
And I will say, because I did see some of the emails, it was generated, just so the general public has information, it was generated by parents who were emailing the schools saying, "When will this happen? How will this happen?" Because they had a child, two years or three years ago, have access to the guidance counselor, had access to a field trip. BVT came in and gave a talk. And those things aren't happening. And that parent, and I think it was two separate parents who had sent emails, were concerned that, you know, children and students not being given, afforded the educational opportunities unless, you know, if they had to know about it beforehand. And that was their main concern is what was going to... Why was there a shift and what was going on? So, I just wanted, just so it knows, it wasn't... You know, it was parent concerns because the process has changed.
So, my point is, both Blackstone and Millville, we support two school systems. And I believe...
And we have representation at both.
And we have representation at both. And I think my... You need... You need to, as far as vocational training goes, you need to expose the 8th graders to all opportunity. You can't limit their opportunity. Because in my mind, that's our futures. You know, high schools bring in military recruiters all the time. Dr. Seniors. Why don't we look at the level of the 8th grade for educational opportunity going forward?
So, my question is, Dr. Fitzpatrick reached out to Mr. Himmelberger?
Yeah, the way around.
Okay. Okay. No, that's fine. Jane is here. Jane is the school committee...
Chair.
Jane Reggio is the school committee chairman, and she is here this evening. So, I know they had a meeting, and there was some discussion that took place. So, my question, I guess, is, has... Is... What is the practice that they're...
Same as it always was. Hasn't changed. So, parents who had emailed concerns or people who had questions never followed through to ask the right people those questions. The process hasn't changed.
Okay. Could you... Do you mind just coming up, Jane? Just so anyone at home?
It will be quick. Let me know.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that people at home hear you and that, you know, and then maybe we can get some clarifying emails in return, either through Dr. Fitzpatrick or Mr. Himmelberger, just stating.
I'm not sure they should come from either. I believe they should come from the school guidance department. And if parents have concerns, they should contact the school guidance department. I think we're living in a society where people expect instant answers from email or Facebook or other things and don't go to where they should be asking the questions in the first place. So, I think if they contacted the school guidance office, they will find that BVT will be coming to the school, giving a presentation. Students who have an interest in visiting BVT will be provided that opportunity to go visit the school. And the applications are available. And I believe November 8th is the day, but I'm not 100% sure of that. Process has not changed. Just the people's anger in the community has changed.
I'm happy to hear that.
That's good news.
Yep.
And thank you for coming to share that with us.
You're welcome. But I think we need some more dialogue. I think we need to be asking... We need to be talking to each other.
And I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
There's not enough conversation this way anymore.
I agree.
Too much electronic stuff hiding behind keyboards doesn't help.
And people assuming because they heard and not because they asked.
So, no change. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Didn't want to discuss that other letter while she was here.
Who'd you have, Tom?
I didn't know. She wanted to discuss this letter about Mr. Himmelberger.
It's not an actionable item, but, you know, it is, was just an announcement. A correspondence. And I appreciate you sending it on Sunday evening, announcing about Mr. Himmelberger having informed the school, regional school district, that he's announcing his retirement. But it would be effective in September, as far as I know, long enough for the school district to try to work on a replacement. I know it's a difficult piece of information for the regional school district to hear. But I appreciate your letting us know as well because obviously, it has implications going forward. And, you know, for Mr. Himmelberger, I think, I'm sure it's a difficult decision unless he has some really great plans to park himself on an island somewhere on retirement. Yeah, I know. His bucket list, I'm sure, to check off. But I'm sure we'll have more dialogue about that. But, you know, we appreciate being informed of that, Jane. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator's report.
Yes. Speaking of wells, well, it's a deep subject. My husband used to say to me when we were first dating, every time I said, "Well", the senior center, water quality testing results. In your packet, you will see, we had an annual well testing done of the senior center and also here. But the senior center in particular showed a presence of coliform, which I am told that has happened in the past. They were informed by the board of health to not be drinking the water. In relation to that, we also sent out someone to do more than just the well testing. We've talked with darling well folks to understand better what we should be doing. If this is something that's happened before, we would obviously need to disinfect the well. We'd have to ensure that it gets properly circulated through the entire system to make sure that the water quality is truly improved and has been disinfected. We'd need the well inspection head. They think that the actual source is because it's not an airtight cap. And so, they're recommending that we actually install a watertight cap, pump out the well to remove any chlorine that has been in there because of the way that they've treated it, and then retest the well for bacteria. There's a cost associated with this, but the more important cost is making sure that no one, you know, happens to fall ill from drinking it in the future. The one thing that I was not aware of is that our senior center does not have an alternate water source, like a water bottle source. And I wanted to let you know that I'm looking right now to actually make that happen. I think they should have it since this isn't the first time. And obviously, we're moving expediently to actually have the well issue addressed. But the senior center director was informed of that, as is, I'm sure, that the council had been. So, we're taking care of that. It should be taken care of. And hopefully, we'll not have this problem going forward in the future. And also, if we, you know, give them a water source that they can draw from to make coffee and stuff like that, I think, you know, it's a small thing to do, but we should do that. Go ahead.
We have one good question.
Sure.
Can you just come up? Because I know Tim's going to open the door and yell at us.
Judy Monroe, 70 Quaker Street, member of the COA. I have a question. Since this has happened several, more than once at the senior center, are the residents that live in the proximity of the senior center, are they in danger of having any of this?
Not as... Well, as you heard, anybody's wells should be tested. Because we don't have, you know, an actual sewer system in town, people are at higher risk for contamination from things like E. coli, which can be extremely, you know, serious if there's some kind of cross-contamination. But coliform itself is something that can come from caterpillars. It can come from, you know, little bugs that get up inside. So, if someone doesn't have an airtight well, I suppose they could have the same kind of organism that's in there. But I think your question is a good one that it just raises, again, that people should routinely have this done. And we do it routinely as a community. Like, you know, it's a good reason why we do it. We find out stuff like this that should be addressed, especially when you have, you know, hundreds of people who cross paths in a particular building. So, I don't think... It's not something that's easily transferred from one well to another unless they have the same kind of issue, which looks like it's a wellhead that is not airtight.
And that's not something, a filter on part of the well or water coming into the building would help?
No, because it's actually an organism. So, yeah, don't...
Okay.
Because you can't really filter that out. If it was like an organic volatile compound, maybe carbon, or it was an element, you could actually filter it out. But for that, no. It's... You've got to kill it.
Okay.
With chlorine or something. It's a disinfectant. You've got to kill it first and then prevent it from recontaminating.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My old public health hat is coming back. So, anyway, so we're dealing with that. And we'll absorb that in part of our maintenance costs. The second item on the town administrator update is about the Longfellow Center. I just wanted to share with the board that I had already started to take steps with our former lead attorney, who worked with us on the whole issue for the lease, about what are we going to start to think about for the old town hall and the kind of steps that we need to think about, attempting to start in a direction to dispose of real property in town, one way or the other. We'll have to come to grips with that. So, if you see, there's a number of steps that would need to be taken place, not so dissimilar to how we eventually needed town approval to go in a certain direction to move our facility here. This is something... This is something we've got to look at. But one of the... And that's one of the things that we have to do some historical...
I was guessing three.
Yeah. We have to do some historical analysis and some research to actually look at when the town received, you know, the use. What's the use of it? I know we use it as a town hall, but I don't know what the original use is. And when you go back in deeds and conveyance, we may need to look at that. Obviously, it's also on a historic register as well. So, there's some other things that actually, might actually work very well for repurposing the property in the future. But just so that you know, I mean, I put these in here for us to consider. In the future, we will have some meeting or workshop that exclusively takes these steps apart. But, you know, it's going to be something I think we need to be thoughtful about. It's going to take some time. Sometimes I'm amazed at how fast we move on some other things because we've had really good actions that we've taken at the right time, plus good legal counsel, plus good support by the board. So, I think we can do the same thing with this and keep the townspeople in the loop. And as we go forward, we'll figure out. But, you know, the longer we leave a building that's vacant that we're not going to be in, you know, the thing we have to consider is we don't want it to get too far down the line and then, you know, have it lose any value that it may have. And also, think about whether, you know, they really... The town has any other purpose that it could foresee. But you'd have to have the funds to do something different with it. So, I think we have those discussions going forward. So, I put that in your packet to start considering. Also, you'll see that I put in your packet the inter-ministerial agreement that we did send to the town of Blackstone for the joint use of the Blackstone Animal Shelter. I know that the town administrator was in receipt of this. I also know that they... I also know that, um, they've had some dialogue and have their Town Council looking at it, but because Mr. Keys, I don't think was available at their last meeting, uh, they, they hadn't, uh, come to terms with that. You know, our relationship with the, the use of the shelter continues. They may come back with some modifications. I, I worked with our, um, animal control officer, uh, who's very familiar with the shelter, to kinda come up with the parameters of when we shelter dogs there that are never claimed by their owners versus when they are claimed. So, uh, I think that we'll probably get a few items to change, once we get it back from them, but hopefully, it will meet their approval.
This has been presented, yep, Select Board.
Yep, yep, they have it in hand. The, um, next, uh, and last item of our Town Administrator Update, uh, relates to the Complete Streets Grant that we have submitted. Uh, as you know, we had received funding, uh, from a prior grant to actually come up with a prioritization plan of all of our streets in town, in hopes that we could identify, uh, streets in terms of a ranking priority, the ones that need to be done, to actually, um, improve, uh, their accessibility, their safety, and, um, the quality of, um, the work, so that people can pass, whether they're pedestrians or vehicles, in a safe way. So, um, having done that, one of our streets, um, that was a lead street that we're doing the Mass Works project on, Central Street, rose to the top of being one of our prioritized streets, because we recognize that if we can actually get the entire street done, and have it, um, compliant with a number of, uh, things that make a complete street complete, then we're on our road to, to being able to do other things. But we have a whole list of other streets, um, in a ranking order. So this grant went in, uh, I think it's a solid grant. It's, um, to try to access funding of upwards of four hundred thousand. I'm already working to, um, look at, um, dialoguing with the people who actually award the funding. They're well aware of our, um, our pitch that we're putting forward, and hopefully, we'll hear soon, and if that's the case, then it will help us go a long way. I know that a highway surveyor knows, um, he's been part of this process. Our town planner's been part of the process, myself, TEC Engineering. So I think it's a solid proposal, and let's just hope that, once again, we'll be lucky and receive funding. And that is it for the Town Administrator Update.
Thank you.
And our next regular meeting is November sixth, um, Monday, uh, but obviously, we're gonna be having special meetings on, um, yes, the twenty.
Seven.
Twenty-seven, thank you, at seven PM. And I just have the, uh, signatures to sign. The, uh, Toll Road and the minutes. You wanna start with that, and? There's one other set of minutes that we never signed. We approved them, but we didn't sign them. We walked out the door.
Thank you, Brian. Andrew.
Yeah, when we were signing the deeds and the, uh, blue wave agreement, I forgot to, um, hand that off. That's for the Toll Road.
I wasn't at that meeting.
This one you were. I think that.
Yeah.
After minutes, but I wasn't at the meeting that you voted to approve those. Correct?
Oh, I know what you're saying, yeah, probably.
Yep. You were at, um.
You voted on that.
He was.
At the second meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, we're stuck to the bottom of the deed and lieu of foreclosure, and I didn't, uh, hand it out.
So, uh, you've announced our next meetings, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. It's eight fifty, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Eight fifty-six.